Yeah, question is not personal.
All right, ladies and gentlemen, the time is now seven thirty on this Tuesday, March eighth, and I'd like to call this meeting of the City Council to order. Would you all please stand and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to your light, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
With the pledge concluded, will the clerk please call the roll?
McHale.
Here.
Budman.
Present.
O'Brien.
Here.
Beniziano.
Here.
Passasi.
Here.
Reyes.
Here.
Sanoyka.
Here.
With seven present and nobody absent, there is a quorum this evening. Therefore, members of the audience, you're reminded that these proceedings are being recorded for current and future broadcast over the city's cable television channel, as well as our other media outlets. First order of business is to approve minutes from previous meetings. There are two sets of minutes to approve tonight, and the first set is from February fifteenth, twenty twenty-two's Committee of the Whole. Is there a motion to approve this set of minutes?
Summat.
Thank you, Alderman Sanoyka, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Alderman McHale, for the second. Are there any corrections, additions, or deletions to this set of minutes? Seeing none, the question is, shall the minutes be approved? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. The ayes have it, the minutes are approved. The next set of minutes is from February twenty-second of twenty twenty-two, it's a City Council meeting. Is there a motion to approve this set of minutes?
Summat.
Thank you, Alderman Sanoyka, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Alderman O'Brien, for the second. With this set of minutes, are there any corrections, additions, or deletions? Seeing none, the question is, shall the minutes be approved? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. The ayes have it, those minutes are approved. Well, it's been quite some time since we've had this privilege from deviating from our agenda, but at this time I'd like to look for a motion to deviate for swearing-in of two new members of our Police Department. Is there such a motion?
Summat.
Thank you, Alderman Sanoyka, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Alderman O'Brien, for the second. Would all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. The ayes have it, we will now deviate from our regular agenda and get down with the process. Chief Nowacki, would you like to come up here?
Sure, thank you, Mayor, thank you, City Council. Well, I got the mic. Boy, this is unusual, it's been a long time since I saw... Uh-oh, technical difficulties. I'm gonna stay right here and not move too much. Tonight is a very special night for two of our newest officers. I think tonight is very important to introduce our two new police officers to the public in which they're gonna serve. Tonight, we have Cassandra DeFranco, if you come on up here, Cassandra, and then also Officer Bill O'Sullivan. These two officers started in June of last year, so it's been some time since we've been able to do this. They attended the Chicago Police Academy, which was about twenty-three weeks long, and they're currently in their field training process. We also do have a tradition here in Rolling Meadows, we have the officers being sworn in, get to choose somebody very special in their lives to pin their badge on them, and we have a little bit of a theme going today, because we have both of their mothers here, correct? So I'm gonna have Cassandra, if you want to introduce who's here for you?
I have my mother, Mary DeFranco.
If you want to come on up here, please. And then Bill, you want to introduce your mom?
You.
I have my mother, Kathy O'Sullivan.
All right, I'm gonna turn this over to the Mayor for the official swearing-in.
Thank you, Chief. I'm gonna do the change-up here and allow you to hold this microphone in your left hand.
Okay.
While you raise your right hand, and you're going to repeat after me. Aye, Cassandra DeFranco.
Aye, Cassandra DeFranco.
Having been appointed to the office of police officer.
Having been appointed to the office of police officer.
In the city of Rolling Meadows, County of Cook.
In the city of Rolling Meadows, County of Cook.
Do hereby solemnly promise.
Do hereby solemnly promise.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And all the laws and ordinances of the city of Rolling Meadows.
And all the laws and ordinances of the city of Rolling Meadows.
And that I will perform the duties.
And I will perform the duties.
Of the office of a Rolling Meadows police officer.
Of the office of a Rolling Meadows police officer.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Thank you, sir.
Somebody did a practice.
There you go, sir.
Yes, sir.
Raise your right hand and repeat after me. Aye, William O'Sullivan.
Aye, William O'Sullivan.
Having been appointed to the office of police officer.
Having been appointed to the office of police officer.
In the city of Rolling Meadows, County of Cook.
In the city of Rolling Meadows, County of Cook.
Do hereby solemnly promise.
Do hereby solemnly promise.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And all the laws and ordinances of the city of Rolling Meadows.
And all the laws and ordinances of the cities of Rolling Meadows.
And that I will perform my duties.
And that I will perform my duties.
Of the office of a Rolling Meadows police officer.
Of the office of a Rolling Meadows police officer.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my abilities.
Well, this is a proud parent moment for you guys, you're more than welcome to take photos if you want here, we can have family members come up with the chief, and we would gladly have staff go ahead and take the pictures for you if you'd like. And then after the pictures, I do have Kate and Coffee in my conference room for the family of the officers. And then we'll have the families can come up. Don't feel rushed, this is a normal...
Yeah, I want to get some coffee, wait a minute.
All right, good. Yeah, however you may. Look here.
Sure. I can take more votes, no problem.
Yeah, let me take it just so it doesn't go, you know how it does. Ready? We'll give you first, one, two. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
All right, so with the swearing over, or swearing ins over, the alts concluded, I'll look for a motion to close the floor.
Summat.
Thank you, Alderman Sanoyka, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Alderman McHale. All those in favor of closing the floor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. The ayes have it, we will now resume with the regular agenda. So this evening, I do not have anything for the mayor's report, are there any ward reports this evening? Alderman O'Brien?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll provide the monthly update on the EDC, that met just last night based on how the meeting dates fell this month. EDC shared their appreciation and thanks to the council for their support of allowing EDC to pursue the twenty twenty-two goals as we outlined. We did remove one about the landlord affordability items, since that's strictly private party interactions there. We'll continue to work on those throughout the year in collaboration with staff and the primary and alternate leads for each of the goals that we noted. We'll continue to work on that and bring proposals to the full EDC, and then we'll put together a complete package to bring to the full council for direction or approval based on the feedback. So, we do thank, I'm passing on the EDCs, thank you to the council for allowing that flexibility in running with the goals as we see fit for EDC. Couple other quick bullets, we talked about Restaurant Week Eat Local is taking place March fourth through the thirteenth, so be sure to check out the city website that has the details on which local restaurants are participating in the Eat Local. Staff will be also providing going forward a vacancy report for EDC in terms of commercial retail as well, and broken out by areas of the city, so we'll give a little bit better understanding. We're gonna go ahead and get additional education and review of Class VI information, just for our own knowledge going forward, and then there has been increased, happy to say increased, availability and interest in possible food and dining establishments. One is where the previous Great American Bagel used to be, the previous Aglectic, the previous Srobrossa, and then the previous Byline Bank in Algonquin. No other details are available at this time, but interest is starting to pick up through the great work of the city staff, and as more information's available, they'll circle back to us, but they are getting some activity for dining establishments within the city.
Thank you, Alderman O'Brien, bearing positive and...
Promising. Are there any other ward reports this evening? Alderman Reyes.
Thank you, Mayor. So our city utilities team and their contractor will be making some emergency sanitary sewer repairs to a resident on Magnolia Drive, starting on March tenth. The excavation will take place, however, on Brookmead Drive, as this is where the sanitary service is located, and they will need to shut down a section of it. The team will have the necessary signs and detours, but I wanted to give the residents a bit of notice.
Thank you, Alderman Reyes. Any other ward reports? Okay, if there aren't any further ward reports, then we will move on in the agenda, and this would be the time where we open the floor to the public for the next twenty minutes. There are signatures on this evening's sign-in sheet, so before we commence with opening the floor, just wanna lay a couple ground rules per the procedures to the public, and that in order to attain this objective of having a cohesive, friendly meeting, that any person who seeks to address the City Council at this time for public comments shall be permitted to speak only upon recognition of the presiding officer, and such person shall adhere to the following provisions. Each person addressing the City Council shall state their name for the record. Each person shall be granted no more than five minutes of the allotted twenty minutes in order to address the City Council. Questions and/or commentary shall be limited to city business. Comments supporting or opposing a nominated person's candidacy for elective office of the city shall be out of order. Discussion shall take place in a professional manner, which displays mutual respect, and profanity shall not be used in any form or manner. With that, the first name on the sign-in sheet is Avind Goyal.
Good evening, Mayor Gallo and Alderman. It's a privilege for me to come back to the City Council. Used to practice thirty years across the street, and I now work for the state as Medicaid Medical Director, and it's a definite privilege for me to be here, to speak on the ordinance regarding dispensaries for marijuana or cannabis. I would also like the privilege to introduce two members of the Rolling Meadows Tobacco Information and Prevention Committee, who happen to be in the audience. One is Dr. Susan Kern, she's a pathologist and a previous township member in Palatine. And Linda Ballantyne, who you all know, is the immediately past Executive Director of the Chamber. So I wanted to just get into the business of my comments, I wanted to say that, most importantly, we decided that we will stick to the science and data that we have in our comments, as opposed to giving our opinions on this issue, because it's a relatively new science, if you will, in some ways. So in nineteen ninety, cannabis carried four percent of THC, the active ingredient in cannabis. In two thousand fifteen, a sample in Colorado revealed anywhere between forty to ninety-five percent. The national average in two eighteen, which I had the last data, I did not do a lot of research since then, it carried sixteen percent on an average nationally. In the absence of existing federal or state rules, or more scientific research, or pending more scientific research, you need to control, this council needs to control, the content by regulation. The use of substances of potential abuse increases when harm perception is low, and we are especially concerned about the youth, the adolescents, the middle school, high school kids. And I would say that because the perception that marijuana is harmless is at the lowest, if you look at the graph, right now, about thirty-six percent of high school students believe that cannabis is harmless. The National Survey on Drug Use and Health, it's called NSDA, is funded by SAMSHA, which is the Federal Agency for Substance Abuse Mental Health. They conduct this survey every year, it's like the Bible for the drug addiction situation. And in two eighteen, that's the last year that I have numbers for, although I think two twenty data was just published, ever tried, eighth graders had seventeen percent have ever tried marijuana. Twelfth grader, fifty percent of them had tried at least once. Past year, eighth graders had twelve percent, and twelfth grader said thirty-five percent of them had used it at least once in the last year. The current and past month use for eighth graders was seven percent, and for twelfth graders, it was twenty-one percent. These rates exceed current tobacco and alcohol use in the same survey. So tighter guardrails would be needed if you were to go ahead with the ordinance, to reduce youth access to cannabis. Nine percent of adult users get addicted, seventeen percent risk if started before the age of eighteen, and twenty-five to fifty percent become addicted.
One minute, sir.
Yes. People addicted to cannabis have three percent, three times increased risk to opioids, alcohol, and tobacco. The City Council should require cannabis business to fund a dedicated professional service or task force to help prevent and manage those new expected cases of addiction. I would say the last thing I want to say, that recreational use of cannabis... I take that back, the law allows you to levy incremental and conditional local tax up to three percent to cover.
Sir.
The community consequences.
Five minutes. That's your five minutes, sir.
Okay. Thank you very kindly, Mayor.
You're welcome.
I appreciate it, and if there be any questions, I'd be happy to answer them now or after the meeting.
Appreciate that, thank you.
God bless.
The next name is Linda Ballantyne?
Good evening, members of the City Council. I come to you not being with the tip committee, but under economic development. I believe this particular ordinance amendment being considered in the areas along Algonquin, Wilkie, and Gulf Roads fall under economic development for the following reasons. City is looking for new and additional revenue sources that will not impact current services, cost to residents, or businesses. Owners, management, and leasing agents of strip centers need help filling their vacant spaces to remain viable. Retail tenants need help attracting potential customers to their businesses with limited marketing budget and foot traffic. These are all given, including the makeup of most neighborhood and traditional strip centers. Cleaners, hair salon, internail salon, carryout pizza, liquor store, sit-down eatery, with or without gaming. Sprinkled in is many non-traditional retail, such as tax preparation, insurance agency, chiropractor, dentist, smoke shop, financial institution, cellphone carrier. Many of those do not produce any sales tax revenue for the city, but they're viable businesses, of service businesses, and they meet a need. Gone are the days of traditional retail establishments in neighborhood strip centers in Rolling Meadows, such as bakeries, independent drugstores, hardware stores, shoe store, boutiques, clothing stores. The need of additional revenue sources, as well as the needs and assistance of independent neighborhood strip centers, cannot be overlooked or discounted. You have one on Algonquin Road that currently has only one tenant, and that's Autozone. What I want to bring attention to as well, is the Class A and Class B office complexes with corporate tenants along Algonquin, Gulf, and Wilkie Roads. The owners, management, and commercial leasing agents are also needing assistance with retaining their tenants and filling their vacant offices. It's the companies that fuel our daytime economy and daytime population, which before COVID was more than double of our residential population. Their employees were more likely to go out and eat at our restaurants, shop at our grocery stores, and take advantage of other available services during their lunch or after hours as commuters. So part of economic development would include how to maintain the corporate business and bring in others to fill the vacant office spaces in Class A and Class B office buildings. During my years at the Chamber, it was not uncommon for corporate companies that were in the process of moving into Rolling Meadows or considering to move here to request demographics to our community, including nearby amenities for employees, such as things to do, places to go, and unique or popular eating and shopping establishments. You can hopefully appreciate the difficulty in providing a list that has no entertainment options, specialty, or destination venues within our community. Will amending the zoning code cause an unforeseen challenge within the corporate community, knowing they are mostly drug-free workplaces? Regardless of Illinois's allowance of changes to what is legal, most corporations have multiple locations in other states, so their drug-free policies must be consistent on a federal level and not on a state level. I wish I had the answers for you on knowing if the proposed code amendment could or would have an adverse effect on bringing new drug-free corporate businesses to Rolling Meadows. I would like to share my misgivings while at the Chamber in making assumptions that I was so certain could be proven out, and I was wrong. Shopping patterns of typical neighborhood strip centers will not draw customers from a larger radius.
Thirty seconds, man.
Unless they have a unique or specialty shops.
Thirty seconds.
And I just, again, I understand the advantage of Route fifty-three and other major highways, expressways, that will draw and capture more potential businesses and people to Rolling Meadows, but only if you have the right mix of offerings and amenities. And that's basically, I just wanted you to consider if there could be any kind of adverse effect to the large Class A and Class B corporate offices within Rolling Meadows that are drug-free workplaces. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next on the list is Susan Kay, and I'm sorry, Susan, I can't pronounce her name. Kern?
Then I would, I've already relinquished my time to Dr. Goyal, he covered the items that we had discussed.
Okay, thank you. Then the next speaker is Glenn Terris? Terris? Thank you, Terris.
Yeah, I won't, hopefully I won't use all my five minutes here. I'm a resident of Rolling Meadows, Seventh Ward, my name's Glenn Terris, been a resident here since nineteen eighty-five, and I've seen this city, you know, go through the last, I don't know how many years, thirty, forty years. I would suggest you get a copy of the doctor's report, I know he had a lot of information there, but I think you really should share it with the City Council, that information, about addiction. I contribute every year to Churches Against Addiction, and I, you know, I'm not a doctor, but I've raised children. My ex, my current wife, from a previous marriage, had three children, and she had four grandchildren. I had three children, and I've now got seven grandchildren, and I know what marijuana can do to a kid, and we've already got marijuana in this city. You already got one dispensary in the city, I don't see any need for a second one. People want marijuana, they can go to the place that's already open, or they can go to another city. I know the revenue is very tempting, I mean, you guys, you know, you can give yourself raises, and that's why it's so tempting. And, believe me, I know, you're not reducing the city tax, when you, when you started gambling, I was against the gambling here in the city. When they first put in the gambling, it was supposed to be from established restaurants that were established for one year, for established restaurants, and you bypassed that, you went through that, now you got, I don't know how many gambling establishments in the city of Rolling Meadows, seems like almost every other corner has one. I know in my neighborhood, there's at least three. So, that was, people were against that, yet that proliferated, now you've got marijuana coming in here, and you want to proliferate that, and you don't know, you know, do any of you have kids? Have you ever had a kid that took marijuana, and how it takes away their ambition? Why do you think there's so many homeless people now, smoking marijuana? Rather, they'd rather go smoke marijuana than go to work. So, you know, I'm letting my voice be heard here, I wish more people would have showed up, because I got a thing in my door against, you know, talking about the meeting here and trying to make people aware of what's happening here, so I just hope you take what I'm saying seriously, because I will vote the next election, and that's, that's, I will vote the next election, and I know you voted for it last time, and I know we had a conversation, and I don't understand this about Arlington Heights, Arlington Heights doesn't even have gambling, neither does Palatine, so you're not... So you're not allowed to put two marijuana dispensaries here in Rolling Meadows. I'm not against marijuana, but you know what? Marijuana is illegal, according to the United States. It's only in the states that legalized it. Nationwide, it's illegal. So, anyway, that's my say.
Thank you, sir. Luke Funk?
Good evening, Mayor, good evening, council. My neighbor, my name is Luke Funk, average citizen. I'm back again since last time, so my, my statement still stands from last time. But I'm a little more concerned that there's an organization out of Florida who's passing around this fear in Rolling Meadows, because I don't think I, we heard this kind of rhetoric in twenty fifteen when we installed the last dispensary. So I did some, some work since last time, coming up to this time. I called my alderman. I said, how did that go? Because I know you voted no. How did you get there? And he said, well, I represented the people who contacted me, and it's outstanding good job, because that's what you're supposed to do. So what we have right now is a loud minority and a very silent majority. We, there's about twenty thousand estimated voting citizens in Rolling Meadows, and you probably have somewhere around eighteen hundred in your individual wards. Now, if eighteen hundred people, or I don't know, seventy percent of them did stand up and say, hey, this is a problem, you should side that way. Because they obviously don't give a rip if they're just going to keep their mouth shut. Now, I, we're just going to move this thing next to another pot dispensary. If you look it up, it's in Arlington Heights, it's a mile down the road, and I don't get the whole hubbub. But I appreciate your time, and just think about the numbers before we lose our minds to somebody in Florida that's got their own drug problems, comes up here and stirs hell. Have a good night.
Thank you. That concludes the list of speakers. So we'll continue on the agenda to items pending. That brings us to line item A. It's ordinance number two-two dash one-one. At this time, it's to amend sections one-twenty-two dash eight-five and one-twenty-two dash three-three-one of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Rolling Meadows in Illinois to allow and regulate adult-use cannabis dispensaries as an allowable special use in commercial zoning districts. This is in for second reading. Is there a motion to adopt this ordinance?
So moved.
Thank you, Alderman Sanoka, is there a second? Thank you, Alderman McHale, for the second. Is there any discussion on this item at this time? Alderman O'Brien?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As I noted last time, is personally, I am in favor of this, but that's not why we're on this dais here. And I do want to thank the nearly seventy residents that reached out. I know that doesn't sound like a big number, but it is based on number of folks and things that voted, and close to sixty-six percent of the Third Ward residents that reached out are opposed to this. As they do feel that one dispensary, as I noted the last time, is enough for a city of our population. So while I do feel personally, I'm in favor of it, but again, that's not why I ran for this. So I'm going to be voting no on this topic for the same reason I did last time. The sixty-six, near sixty-six percent of the residents that reached out were opposed to it. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Alderman O'Brien. Alderman Besessi, you have your hand up.
Yes. I've put a lot of thought into this and, you know, gotten some feedback since the last meeting. Not as much as I hoped. So I did start to make some phone calls to residents within my ward to determine if there was a silent majority. I'm convinced there is a silent majority in favor of this. Most of the people that I contacted were concerned about the flyer that was put out. But once I sent the record straight on what exactly we were voting on and heard and listened to their concerns, they said, oh, okay, I understand. Probably my biggest concern is the proliferation of these. I feel the council prior to me did a piss-poor job on the casinos, and I don't want that to happen again on this. So I am most likely going to vote yes on this, but I would like to propose one amendment to this. And I would like it written in there that there would be no more than one within this area. So that would be my proposed amendment.
Is there a second to Alderman Besessi's no more than one written in the zoning amendment?
I'll second it for the vote.
Thank you, Alderman Sanoka, for the second. Is there any discussion on the amendment? Alderman Sanoka?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. While I appreciate the concern that many residents have regarding this issue, because the state statute does not allow for additional dispensaries within a fifteen-hundred-foot radius, I feel that this would, at this point, be overkill. But I think that if that state statute were to ever change, that we should return to this ordinance and then adjust it to make sure that there is only one or one that would fit in this area. So as it stands, I, I don't anticipate there being more than one. And that also because of the specific area that it borders, there's another municipality that would also potentially influence whether or not we can have one or none. So at, at this point, I would not be in favor of that amendment at this time.
Thank you, Alderman Sanoka. Any other discussion on this amendment suggestion? Alderman Besessi?
Given the fact that things do change, and the fact that, you know, we really don't want a proliferation of this, I believe now is the appropriate time to put in the language regarding one. So that there is no reason to go back and re-discuss this whole thing. We can always go back and change it to two at some point. But I think for right now, based on feedback from residents and concerns and the relative newness of these things within our state, I think it's important to really put as much control as possible. I do agree that there is a lot of control on any establishment that would want to come in. They have to get through two planning commission votes, they have to get through two council votes, they need to have their Ts crossed, their Is dotted, and, and all that stuff. But I just, for the residents of our, of our community, I would like it written into the actual ordinance that, that it's no more than one within this area.
Alderman McHale?
Regarding that, I have no problem with that and agree that I, I would think that that would be appropriate for that location to only have one dispensary in that specific area.
Alderman Sanoka?
Question for our city attorney. So for this amendment, is this a line item that we can add here? Or does Alderman Besessi have language that he would propose for this amendment?
We would be able to draft the language based upon the motion, which would essentially be to amend Exhibit One to limit the number of dispensaries in commercially zoned districts to one. We would be able to do that.
Very well. Thank you for the clarification.
Any other discussion on this motion to amend? Alderman Budmets?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was part of the, to quote you, piss-poor city council that pushed through the casinos or gambling. And, and this is exactly, exactly how it happened. We started out with just one, and it would only be if it was in a restaurant that had been a well-established, and it was going to be well-controlled, and it wasn't going to be, it, it was going to be wonderful. It was going to, it was going to generate income. And, and now you have residents who are like, we didn't do a good job controlling it, it's proliferated. And, and so I, I guarantee you that in a year or two or three, residents will say, we did a piss-poor job of handling this as well. And it always starts out with just one, and then, and just a little bit more, and it's creep. And so at, at some point, you have to decide if you're going to take a stand and, and go against the grain and say, not here, and, and, and our neighboring communities can do it, and, or not. And so I'll still be voting no. I, I understand what you're trying to accomplish, but once you open the door, the horses run out of the barn, and that's the end of it. And so I'll still be voting no, out of respect for my residents. I realize that the, that the flyer that we got came from someplace in Florida, but the emails came from my residents who voted for me, and the phone calls came from my residents. And they care about Rolling Meadows, and they don't want, they don't want further proliferation of marijuana. And so I have to, out of respect for them, vote no.
Thank you. Any further discussion on this motion to amend, limiting it to just one in the zoning code text? If not, then I'll ask for the clerk to count the roll on the amendment for the vote.
Sanoka?
Yes.
McHale?
Yes.
Budmets?
No.
O'Brien?
No.
Beniziano?
No.
Besessi?
Yes.
Reyes?
Yes.
With four in favor and three opposed, the amendment passes. Now we're back to the original with the amendments included. Any discussion on this to continue before we go on to the vote? Alderman McHale?
So I had the opportunity to talk with and heard from many of my residents about this ordinance and kind of experienced the same as Alderman Besessi in that I needed to reach out to those that I felt didn't have as much of a voice. I appreciate the opinions of everyone that cared, cared enough to reach out to me. And I've really put a lot of thought into this and have heard passionate arguments from residents on both in favor and opposed to this issue. Tonight's vote is on a special use permit in a very specific area, the commercial district east of New Wilkie Road. Our Planning and Zoning Commission voted unanimously in favor of this text amendment. My concern is if we do not pass this ordinance for this area, that it opens up space, an opportunity in, for a neighboring community to open up a dispensary within their boundaries in the same general location. So it's still in the community, and we get zero benefit from that. It's, it's, I find it difficult to deny this special use permit to a vetted and legal business that will be economic benefit to the city while being in an area that is least obtrusive and will limit impact on residential areas, especially when we don't have many of those in Rolling Meadows, as is. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Alderman McHale. I do commend my colleagues, the councilmen and women, who, who did go out and actively solicit feedback from the residents in their ward. Naturally, because this was a very one-sided channel of communication initiated by these flyers. As one of the speakers mentioned earlier about the size of our population, you know, we, we do have twenty-four thousand residents, and as of the twenty-twenty census results, we have over eighteen thousand residents who are eighteen and over. We all know from campaigning that if you want to get a message across, you have to deliver thousands of flyers to your population. And to Alderman O'Brien's point, yes, you're right. We, collectively, we heard from about seventy-three residents. But that also discounts the remaining individuals who were either indifferent or in favor, but didn't voice their concerns, because the flyer was telling only those who are opposed to speak, and not that if those who are indifferent or in favor don't speak, then only the opposition will be, will be reflected in the council's decisions. Right? And so I think it's, it's very, it's very important that we solicit feedback and not just take the sentiment that is delivered to us and make sure that we consider all of the other flyers that did go out in the community. And we got seventy-three responses in opposition, and there were probably thousands of flyers that went to households in the community. To, to this point, as we move forward, if there's any further discussion, we'll take it now. Otherwise, we'll go for the vote. Alderman O'Brien?
I'd just like to clarify, that was seventy-three in total not fully in opposition, are the calls I received. I don't know how many you received, but mine were not all in opposition. It was a cumulative number of seventy-three. It was about the sixty-six percent of that was, that was opposed.
So the seventy-three is collective of what we all received as in opposition, from what each council member received?
Oh, okay. So that was not my experience with the full opposition of the seventy-three I heard from.
Correct. Collective council feedback, yes. Thank you. Alderman Beniziano?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I too have received numerous, I started getting emails, I think, as soon as the flyers hit the door a couple weeks ago, and, and not even knowing that the flyer, what the flyer was. And so I fielded many phone calls and, and many emails. And, and at first, it was very much opposed, and then they did start trickling in, in favor of. And so, and, and then I did get a, a lot of phone calls just asking questions. Exactly what was this ordinance that we were looking to change? And how would this benefit the community? And how would it really affect the residents? And I'll be very truthful, I don't know how it's going to affect the residents, because we don't know. We don't have the facts. This is too new of a ordinance, even in the state of Illinois, to really have the facts yet. Yes, it's in Colorado, but we're not Colorado. And so I answer truthfully, I don't know how it's going to affect us. Yes, we can speak to the tax revenue, and that is great. But I've said it before, even with gaming, it doesn't mean it's necessarily the right community to be in. It doesn't mean that we want strip clubs on every corner. That's not appropriate. I don't want to raise my kids in a community like that. And so I fielded these questions, and I answer them honestly. I have the great opportunity to go within our community and all of our wards through my job, and I'm in a lot of homes, and a lot of people got that flyer. A lot of them even took off the door to hand to the people and, and answer their questions. And a lot of them were saying a lot of the flyer is a lot of baloney, I'll be honest. But they needed the facts. And I think once the facts were brought to their attention, their opinion is their opinion. That flyer did not change their opinion on, on this whole topic. And with that being said, I still had a very overwhelming response of to vote no against this. So I will continue to vote no against this. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Beniziano. Any further discussion? If not, will the clerk please call the roll?
McHale?
Yes.
Budmets?
No.
O'Brien?
No.
Beniziano?
No.
Besessi?
Yes.
Reyes?
Yes.
Sanoka?
Yes.
With four in favor and three opposed, this ordinance is adopted. This brings us to ordinance number two-two dash zero-zero. It's line item B at this time to authorize reserving the city's twenty-twenty-two home rule private activity bond volume, volume cap. Is there a motion to adopt this ordinance? So moved, Mr. Mayor? Thank you, Alderman O'Brien.
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, the question is, shall the ordinance move forward for second reading? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Budmets?
Yes.
O'Brien?
Yes.
Beniziano?
Yes.
Besessi?
Yes.
Reyes?
Yes.
Sanoka?
Yes.
McHale?
Yes.
With seven in favor and none opposed, this ordinance will move forward for second reading. This brings us to new business. This is item C. It's a motion to approve payment of bills on warrant for March eighth, twenty-twenty-two. Is there a motion to approve the warrant?
So moved.
Thank you, Alderman Sanoka, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Alderman O'Brien. Is there any discussion for the bills on warrant? Seeing none, the question is, shall the warrant be approved? Will the clerk please call the roll?
O'Brien?
Yes.
Beniziano?
Yes.
Besessi?
Yes.
Reyes?
Yes.
Sanoka?
Yes.
McHale?
Yes.
Budmets?
Yes.
With seven in favor and none opposed, the warrant is approved. This brings us to the next item on the agenda, which are the consent resolutions. This consists of two items. Those are items D and E. Does any alderman wish to remove any items from the consent agenda for resolutions? Okay, seeing none, the chair declares an order for one motion to consider the two resolutions in a single motion without debate. Is there such a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Alderman Sanoka, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Alderman Beniziano, for the second. Beginning with line item D, resolution number two-two dash R dash two-six is to award a three-year contract for landscape services from fiscal year twenty-twenty-two through fiscal year twenty-twenty-four with two annual renewal options. Line item E, resolution number two-two dash R dash two-seven is to award a construction contract for the Brockway Sanitary Sewer Extension. The question is, shall the two resolutions be adopted? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Beniziano?
Yes.
Besessi?
Yes.
Reyes?
Yes.
Sanoka?
Yes.
McHale?
Yes.
Budmets?
Yes.
O'Brien?
Yes.
With seven in favor and none opposed, the resolutions are adopted. This brings the council on to other business and reports. As you'll note in the agenda, I do have an appointment this evening. It's for the Library Board of Trustees, and I'm bringing forth Adrian Rubinkowski. You've all seen her bio and background. She's a very involved steward of the library, as is. And so at this time, I would ask for a motion to approve her appointment. Is there such a motion? Alderman Besessi, thank you for the first, is there a second? Alderman O'Brien, thank you for the second. Is there any discussion on Ms. Rubinkowski's appointment? Seeing none, then I'll ask that the clerk please call the roll.
Besessi?
Yes.
Reyes?
Yes.
Sanoka?
Yes.
McHale?
Yes.
Budmets?
Yes.
O'Brien?
Yes.
Beniziano?
Yes.
With seven in favor and none opposed, Ms. Adrian Rubinkowski is now part of the Library Board of Trustees. I do not have any proclamations. Is there anything for the city clerk to report?
No, not tonight.
Thank you. Then this will move us along to city staff reports. Just an FYI, there are no discussions during the staff reports. The first item on staff reports are the community items of interest, and for this, I will defer to Lori Cizak. Lori, when you're ready, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mayor. The March Newsletter can be found on the city website.
Lori, I'm sorry. Can we see if another microphone works? I just want to make sure the residents can hear at home and the recording.
Okay, here we go again. The March Newsletter can be found on the city website. Please visit citirm.org and click on the News and Views tab. Don't forget to spring forward this Sunday, March 13, at 2:00 a.m. for daylight savings. This is also a great time to test your smoke and carbon monoxide alarms and replace any non-functioning batteries or expired alarms. Enjoy extra savings at five Rolling Meadows restaurants during Eat Chicago Northwest Eat Local Week. Visit Gus's Diner, Stadium Sports Club, Rep's Place, Los Two Polos Mexican, or Coquellico Cafe until March 13 for valuable savings. Remember to mention the Eat Local Week discount. Public Works is now hiring seasonal employees for a variety of positions such as maintenance workers, clerical, custodial, and interns for community development and engineering. Applicants must be 18 or older and can apply by visiting citirm.org. To ensure motorist safety, the police department will be participating in the St. Patrick's Day Traffic Enforcement Campaign from March 11 to 18. Officers will be actively enforcing DUI violations, speeding, unlawful use of cell phone while driving, seat belt wearing, and child safety seat violations. If alcohol will be a part of your St. Patrick's Day festivities, don't get behind the wheel impaired. Rather, plan ahead to ensure you have a safe ride home. To raise funds for the Illinois Special Olympics this past Sunday, the Rolling Meadows Police Department did a polar plunge into the icy waters at Twin Lakes Recreation Area in Palatine. The team raised over $3,800 for these amazing athletes. A special thank you to all participants and to, especially to Officer Pack for his outstanding dedication to this and other Special Olympics fundraising events. Thank you.
Thank you, Lori. From the community items of interest, we will pivot to our business advocate, Martha Coroner, for the new businesses in February of 2022. Martha?
Thank you, Mayor. For the month of February, we had five new businesses in Rolling Meadows, two industrial sales offices, a new retailer at Rolling Meadows Shopping Center in Kirchhoff Road, astrology gallery selling books and crystals. We also have a live performance theater supply and installation company called BMI Supply opening. And then we have a workforce development training provider, new skills training. Thank you.
Thank you, Martha. Always promising to hear of new businesses. Third item here is the Carnegie Drainage Improvement Status Report, and this I'll defer to you, Director Horn, when you're ready.
Thank you, Mayor. This is just an update for those aldermen who have been regularly contacted by the business owner at 1225 Carnegie related to flooding problems. For several years, there's been a flooding problem that has resulted from drainage issues beyond this property owner's control. In the last year, those problems have been exacerbated, and we directed our city engineer to develop a plan that can at least provide a short-term solution for that business owner. That plan did require us going to adjacent property owners to try and get their cooperation. Subsequently to that plan, we have a applicant for special use at one of the neighboring properties. So as a condition of that special use, that new property owner will be doing a good portion of the work that needed to be done on their own property. Once that work is completed, our city, our crews, or more likely, a contractor, will be secured by our, our staff, and we will finish up the project, which should hopefully correct this person's drainage problem, at least initially, until we can get a more permanent, long-term solution for the northwest industrial area. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Horn. This will bring us to the final two items. The first of those final two being the March 15 Committee of the Whole draft agenda. For this, Manager Sabo, floor is yours.
Thank you, Mayor, City Council. The draft agendas for the Committee of the Whole, as well as the regular city council, are both included in the agenda packet for tonight's evening. A quick synopsis of the upcoming Committee of the Whole includes a presentation of the fire hall concept. This is the adaptive reuse of the former fire station 15 near the intersection of Meadow and Kirchhoff. In addition, we'll be presenting some proposed and planned updates to the building code and local amendments to those codes. Also, we will continue the discussion from January 18 on the temporary suspension of the water shut-offs and city services for non-payment. Also planned is a discussion of the use of the American Recovery Plan Act, also known as ARPA funds, for water infrastructure improvements. We also will have a presentation on the status of the refuse automation update, which includes our recycling toders, and Director Horn will lead us through that. And lastly, we have a discussion on the personnel rules and regulations of the City of Rolling Meadows related to the city's pay plan. And that's a continued discussion from the November 3, November 23 city council meeting. Additionally, as I mentioned, the March 22 draft city council agenda is included in the packet. I'm happy to answer any questions that the council and the mayor may have. Both agendas will be posted in accordance with the Open Meetings Act once finalized.
Thank you, Manager Sabo. Appreciate that. This brings us now to matters not on the agenda. Are there any matters not on this evening's agenda that the council would like to discuss? Okay, seeing no further matters not on this evening's agenda, then I would like to entertain a motion to enter into closed session under section 2C2 of the Open Meetings Act regarding union negotiations. Do I have that motion?
Some moved.
Thank you, Alderman Sanoyka. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Alderman McHale, on the second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, will the clerk please call roll?
Reyes?
Yes.
Sanoyka?
Yes.
McHale?
Yes.
Budmets?
Yes.
O'Brien?
Yes.
Beniziano?
Yes.
Besessi?
Yeah.
With seven in favor and none opposed, we will now enter into closed session. The audience and press are advised that we do not anticipate taking any further action upon returning to open session. So with that, all non-essentials, so wish you a wonderful evening. Have a great night.